Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District's website, and the postings of such notice at the August Key Minor Administrative Offices, and each elementary, middle, and secondary school website in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Amy, are you here?
Maybe she's muted. Mr. DeFranco?
I thought I saw her.
Here.
Amy was talking.
Can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Sorry, I wasn't sure you could hear me.
I can hear you now.
This is Caminiti here.
I can hear you, Amy.
Mr. DeFranco, Mr. Domlin?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Mr. Domlin? Mr. Domlin? Mr. Jaimo?
Here.
Mr. Little? Mrs. Minuies?
Here.
Mr. Little? Mrs. Minuies? Mrs. Wright? Mrs. Stella?
Mrs. Doherty?
Mrs. Rogers?
Here.
Amy, can you hear me?
Here.
Yes, I can.
We can hear you, Lea.
All right, Mrs. Doherty, Jaimo is here.
Mrs. Bray?
There seems to be a...
Okay. Mrs. Minuies?
I think, just whoever's not on mute while Mrs. Doherty is taking her phone, please don't unmute.
I heard, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I haven't heard from Mrs. Minuies, Mrs. Wright, or Mrs. Stella. Is anyone, any of, are any of you present? No?
Mrs. Wright?
Oh, Robyn's here.
Okay, so I have Mrs. Caminiti, Mr. DeFranco, Mr. Domlin, Mr. Jaimo, Mr. Little.
Robyn's here, too.
Okay. Our Mrs. Wright, okay.
And Robyn's here, Stella.
How about Mrs. Minuies?
Okay.
Okay, that's the only one on...
Amy.
Okay.
She can't get in again.
Amy, wherever you're sitting, wherever you're sitting in your house, you've got this signal.
What's that?
Okay.
Nick, you're frozen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Wait a minute. Pam, Pam, you don't have your whole board here, Pam.
Yes, Leonora, yes.
Can you hear me, Pam?
Okay.
You don't have your whole board here. You did this last week when we weren't on.
Yes. Who are we waiting for?
She's trying to get on. I think you need to get her on the board, on the...
Okay. Um, so...
Joan!
Who, who are you, who's trying to get on? Who's trying to get on, Miss Caminiti? Okay, and is she on her district-issued Chromebook?
Joan, Minuies.
I emailed a couple times about this. She should be on her district-issued Chromebook. Can somebody text Joan and tell her she should be on her district-issued Chromebook?
Pam, it doesn't make a difference.
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful, but...
I'm going, I'm going to text Mrs. Minuies now.
Why? What's the difference? I'm not here to argue with you, Pam. I'm not here to argue.
Because that allows, okay, Leonora, can you hear me? Because if you're on your district-issued Chromebook, that allows Mr. Rotolo to share his screen with you. And I know this because I'm not very good with computers. Um, what you can do is you can have a tech person go on and see the screen with you and help you through it to get you on. That's why we wanted you guys to get on the district-issued Chromebook. That's why Mr. Rotolo reached out a couple times. I reached out a couple times. That's why this is very important.
You could do that on any computer.
That you are on a district-issued Chromebook.
Okay, Pam, Pam, Pam.
No, 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 no. He's going to share with you.
Pam, you could do that on any computer.
It's on his system.
You can do it on any computer.
I don't think so, Caminiti. That's why we need such an effort.
Any computer, you can do it on. I know so far back.
We didn't have this problem again. We are trying to...
No, okay, I, I know.
Okay, why don't we wait for Mr. Rotolo to come on and he could clarify?
Okay, so if that's true, whatever device Mrs. Minuies is on, allow her to get on. And then maybe Mr. Rotolo can share the screen with her, okay? So I'm going to, I'm going to reach out to Miss Minuies right now via text, and I'm going to relay this information to her because she's not getting this information.
But it's not on YouTube. Do you know we're not on YouTube? So something is wrong with the technology, I think, tonight.
We are working on, I'm working on getting it on YouTube right now. There isn't, as far as I know, something wrong with the technology. As for getting, logging into Mrs. Minuies' device, I would only be able to get access remotely if it was a district-issued device.
Are you, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rotolo. That's what I thought. I wasn't sure, but that's what I thought.
Okay.
That's why I tried to reach out a couple times.
Can you reach out? Chris, could you please? Chris, could you reach out to her?
All right, so I've texted, I've texted Mrs. Minuies.
Chris, could you reach out to her, though, on the phone and see if you could talk her through it, please?
Yes, if somebody could please share her number with me.
Okay.
And could you reach out? I believe there's also a phone number that Mrs. Minuies can use to dial into.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeFranco, I couldn't, I could not hear that.
Okay, let's see. Mrs. Minuies says she can hear us. Mrs. Minuies can hear us. So she can hear us. And then perhaps she can comment on the live feed with the YouTube. Is that possible? What do we think? Mr. Rotolo, is that possible for Mrs. Minuies, since she can hear us, to type in on the YouTube feed, perhaps?
Yes, we are working on, we're still working on getting the YouTube feed up. It should be up.
Okay, oh, okay. All right, so...
Pam, Pam.
A couple minutes? Yeah.
Did you send her the phone number? She can just call in from her iPhone.
I tried that last week and it didn't work, but I, I will try again.
Chris, you're saying that you cannot share my screen if it's not a district device?
I'm sorry, that broke up. Can you say that one more time, please?
I'm saying, you just said, you cannot share a screen if it's not a district device?
I do not have the ability to remotely log into your device if I do not have certain information, and I, I don't have that information. I would be able to log in if it was a district device, but I do not have the ability to, to do that if it's not a district device for, for reasons that have to do with technology and other reasons as well.
Okay, Chris, no problem.
This is why we were reaching out to try to distribute district devices to facilitate the process.
Okay, everybody, sorry for the delay. So, Mrs. Minuies, since you can hear us, I just want to tell you, I just sent an email to your board email, and I, sorry, funny text from friends right now. Um, hey, what are you going to do? You know, quarantine or... You're on Zoom. Um, so, Mrs. Minuies, since you can hear me, I just want to tell you that I just sent you the phone number via your email, so you should be able to call in now. Um, and if need be, you can always text me, call me. I'm happy to relay anything that you're saying during the meeting so that you can participate in this meeting. But again, this is why I reached out multiple times about having the district-issued device, and as did Mr. Rotolo. So please, before the next meeting, please, get the district-issued device, please. Oke doko.
Just for, just for the record, we are having an issue right now with our YouTube stream. So I'm working on that to get that up. I will keep you abreast of that, but right now, there seems to be an issue with it. So I will keep you posted.
Okay, so what's the advice on this?
How should we move forward and have this available to the public? Do we take a pause? What are we thinking, Mr. Rotolo?
So Pam, I just was able to get in. Thank you, Kim, for sending me the info. What was the question? I'm sorry.
Mr. Rotolo is saying we're having trouble getting on the YouTube feed so that the public can listen and participate. And I'm wondering, shall we take a pause and see if we can't get on so that the public can participate this evening?
But are there other avenues for the public other than YouTube? Or is that the only avenue for the public, Chris?
There are the Zoom invites, too.
There is an avenue on our website. There are multiple places that can, that allow the public to access this meeting. They can, they can join our meeting instead of simply viewing on YouTube. That was posted on our website, and it was emailed, a district-wide email, to staff and other community members', parents', at 4:00 afternoon.
We have 111 participants. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Stella, would you have 111 participants on the Zoom feed right off the website? Just so we know.
Good, now, that's, that's great. So thank you for the clarification about the multiple vehicles. I would just suggest maybe like a two-minute pause just to, maybe if you could post something on the website saying YouTube feed is down to redirect people to the website and/or so they can figure it out and get over. So just give it like two minutes or so. You know, we're in, obviously, still uncharted territory with the technological challenges that not only Middletown, but other public entities are experiencing as well these days.
Apologies, everybody. We're doing the best we can to get as many people involved as possible. So we'll take a two-minute pause, and then we'll come back to it, okay?
Chris, were we able to post that on the website so we could move forward with the meeting?
Um, yes, it is posted to our website. It is on, it is posted to our website in several locations. And again, I sent that district-wide email out at 4:00 PM today. I'm going to send another one right now, sharing the link to join us directly in the Zoom meeting.
And we now have 103, we had 111, we now have 103 participants. So that's, that's more than your average meeting, and we're grateful for the public participation. I think we should, Madam President, I think we should move forward at this time because we are recognizing our support staff employees of the year. The principals are on with them for their recognition, and that's at the top of the agenda. I know we don't want to keep those stellar employees waiting. They're going to be reading their names, and so, once we can get the meeting, the sooner we can get the meeting going, the better.
Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's move on to that recognition.
All right, well, this is always one of our favorite meetings in person. Our, whenever we're recognizing our students and our employees, that's always fun for the board. I'm sorry that, tonight it must be done remotely, but the Monmouth County Superintendent Support Staff Employees of the Year Program is a recognition program whereby the Middletown Township Board of Education recognized the outstanding achievement by the district's support staff employees. The board commends the following employees for their service and dedication to our school community. I have to tell you that I was president of Superintendent's Roundtable when we instituted this. I was proud to institute this. These are employees that are backbones of our school communities, and we're so grateful for their work. So without any further ado, we will have Mrs. Walker read the names by school in alphabetical order of the support staff employee of the year.
Okay. Benedict Yanella, Bayview Elementary School, head custodian. Helen Acker, Fairview Elementary School, custodian. Susanna Getzko, Harmony Elementary School, paraprofessional. Lauren Hughes, Leonardo Elementary School, paraprofessional. Barbara Fraley, Lynn Croft Elementary School, paraprofessional. Georgine Del Grosso, Middletown Village Elementary School, paraprofessional. Margaret Corbett, Navasink Elementary School, paraprofessional. Dennis Glick, New Monmouth Elementary School, computer specialist. Rory Campbell, Nut Swamp Elementary School, paraprofessional. Jody Vetrano, Ocean Avenue Elementary School, custodian. Charlie Panzinski, Port Monmouth Elementary School, custodian. Mary Lou Moffett, River Plaza Elementary School, paraprofessional. Melissa Setimbrino, Bay Shore Middle School, principal's secretary. Elizabeth Marino, Thompson Middle School, paraprofessional. Jeffrey Duckers, Thorn Middle School, custodian. David Guthrie, Middletown High School North, computer specialist. Victoria Johnson, Middletown High School South, guidance department secretary. Lynn Kwakawski, Central Office, Personnel Department Secretary. August Murphy, Buildings and Ground Maintenance Mechanic. Congratulations.
Okay. Madam President, we can move forward with the agenda at this time.
Okay, congratulations, everyone. I wish we could be doing this in person. But for what it's worth, congratulations, and this is our favorite part of the meeting. This, it's all downhill from here. So, as Dr. George always says. All right, so let's move on to the committee reports. I think technology is usually first, right?
Good evening. Sorry, I was on the phone with Chris trying to work on the YouTube issue. I have a couple items for information only on our workshop. The first item is a 2020 Summer Technology Internship. Earlier this month, we completed our virtual interview process with our high school students interested that, who were interested in interviewing, inter, interning us for the summer. The candidate pool was very strong, and we were able to discover eight students that would be a great success with us in the program. But with what's going on, at the time of selection, the potential interns were notified that due to the central-only employee restrictions in place, the internship is currently on hold until we, while we wait further or new instructions from the state on what we can and cannot do. The second item we have, Student Chromebook Collection. At the end of the school year and years past, we've collected Chromebooks from our middle school students as well as our high school seniors. This year, it will be quite different. This year, we'll be only collecting Chromebooks from our graduating seniors and for those students who will be leaving the district. Our remaining high school students as well as middle school students will hold their Chromebooks for the summer. This is a, it's a plan that we've used the last few years in the high school, and it seemed to work well, and we expect the same results from our middle school population. Those devices that we loaned out to our elementary students for virtual home instruction, they will as well hold on to those devices this summer. And we will reevaluate that as the summer moves, progresses, depending on when or when or where we are allowed to return to the buildings. We'll continue, our version of onsite support helped us for students, as is to the rest of the remainder of the school year, and we will have a, some type of support available for the summer to a lot of the students who have those devices to get support as needed. Third item I have for tonight on the agenda is Destiny Thought Library Synchronization Update. With our students unable to access school, classroom, and Middletown Public Library due to the pandemic, we recently upgraded our district library system to allow easier and more available access to materials right online. We've always had Destiny Thought Library System in-house, but now we have access to it with students and staff from anywhere in the world. We also set up single sign-on credentials, which allows them much easier access. It takes the complication out of trying to access material. Beyond the SSO ability, we also now have it categorized by school grade and even down to classroom level. So librarians and/or classroom teachers can create collections suited for first particular smaller groups. The last item I have for tonight is Google Takeout. Earlier this week, I tweeted out Google information on Google Takeout for graduating seniors, which was shared over and over within a district. I also work with Mr. Kirkpatrick and Dr. Cartier on sharing it directly with each one of our high school seniors. Basically, Google Takeout is a free application, and it allows our students to go to transfer all of their existing digital portfolio, email, pictures, documents, data to a personal Gmail account so they can preserve it indefinitely. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, I have a question.
Thanks, Dave.
Can you hear me?
Sure.
Dave, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Domlin has a question.
Yes.
You talked about the, you talked about the interns, and that you basically were able to interview them, and you have a pool of interns that you want to bring in, but everything's on hold now pending whatever's going to happen, right? Is, is there any way that we can really just welcome into this remote environment and try to start working with them as-is?
We're going to explore all opportunities.
It's going on in life, right? So...
Correct, correct. Unfortunately, many of the projects and, and the assistance that they provide us over the summer is more physical and on hands-on. It's less, less the ability to do remotely or to do, you know. So we're going to try to do everything in our power. You know, as you know, everything is day-to-day at this point with, with the, with direction we're getting from the state. So we're, we're hoping there's some, with certain precautions in place, that we'll still be able to provide them some type of internship.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's move on to Student Services. Dr. Tiedemann?
Hi, everyone. We have a brief agenda for you today. We do have several students who are continuing to receive one-to-one virtual home instruction on the voting agenda. And then we also have a lengthy list of our contracted service providers, our evaluators on the voting agenda. As far as informational items, we did not have any specific meetings, but we do have a meeting scheduled for late next week with the Middletown Township friends and members. So we'll have more on that at the next meeting. Anyone have any questions?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
With the inclusion grant that came out, how are we working on that?
And who's working on it? We are working on it. With, we had a principal-administrative meeting to talk about all the different options, and we have a list of what we're applying for. So if you, and it's open to the public. If you go to the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Ad website, it'll take you right to all of the different inclusion grants. It is a collaboration, for those of you who might not be familiar with it, between New Jersey Coalition of Inclusive Ad, Monmouth State University, and the New Jersey Department of Education. And they're going to be selecting districts based on a criteria and providing different levels of support to help the districts expand their inclusive education. So Danielle Shreck and I have talked to the principals about it, along with Kim Pecus and Marielle Walker. All the administrators have been involved, and we're moving forward with different forms of the applications. We're very excited to be doing it.
When is the grant due? When do you have to have the paperwork in?
We have to have everything in by the end of this week, which we will. And then they expect to have the DOE make the selections by the end of June.
Okay. My next question is, every year we get seats at Monmouth Ocean for students that we might need to place?
Right.
Do we still need that, being that we have the ESS program?
Yes, we, we do have a student, a few students at the high school level that we did have to send out this year. So we really do, because sometimes it's just a better, smaller, full-day environment for them.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just didn't know if we still use them because we have that program.
All right, anybody have any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to facilities and finance.
Okay, for tonight's agenda...
Okay, for tonight's agenda, we have several items for consideration under the reorganization part of the agenda. We have our annual appointments, which are consisting of professional services and designations of specific roles within the district that we do annually. So those are all spelled out in the beginning of the agenda. Then, in addition, we have our financial reports for the month. We have some contracts, specifically some extensions of bids that we went out for last year that we are allowed to do a second year on for various trades. We have an agreement on there with MOESC to administer our non-public textbooks and our technology. And we also have an RFP for the enrollment services, enrollment study and related services that we have put out. We have an award for that to Mylone and McBroom that's on the agenda as well. We also have our safety grant through New Jersey Schools Insurance that we apply for each year. We're given an allocation. This year, allocation is $70,334, so we will be submitting an application to support that and are anticipating receiving that money. We also have an approval for the submission of the application for the CARES Act that was recently put out through the federal government. There are total allocation for Middletown is $438,719. However, $92,395 of that is designated for non-public schools within the township. So our district's portion is $346,324. The the grant period on that runs more than this fiscal year. It runs actually March 13, 2020, through September 30 of 2022, so we have some time to spend the money, but we will be putting an application in for that. I believe it's due June 19. Then we also have a couple of transportation jointures that are on the agenda, and those are for previous previous contracts that we have there in conjunction with tuition contracts that the district has. So it's not buses that are running now, but we're just finalizing the contracts that were applicable for this fiscal year. I also wanted to let the board know that we received some correspondence from the Township of Middletown Storage Authority, Thompson, just thanking our facilities department for assistance with disinfecting and providing some guidance and techniques to fight the COVID-19 virus. So I just thought it was nice of them to recognize Mr. Cahill and other members of our facilities department that assisted with that. So I just wanted to share that with the board as well. And that's all I have under facilities and finance.
Amy, I have a question.
Yes.
How are we going out to bid for our bus routes for next year? Is there a change in the way that we do it? For the next school year?
That's a good question that none of us really know the answer to at this point. I mean, as we, I think we discussed at last meeting, the fact that we're holding off, first of all, on our renewals. I mean, we we have been in contact with the contractors to see which routes we want to renew and they want to renew. I mean, every year, there's certain routes that we won't renew just because we don't need them or we're doing the routes differently. So that list, but we have not put them on the agenda for approval because we are holding off to see, you know, what the situation is next year. And then on top of that, like mentioned, there's also bids that we put out to secure routes for next year. And at this point, we're kind of in a holding pattern until we get some more clarity on what we're going to need for next year. We don't want to commit before we know that. You know, so we're hoping to get some guidance shortly so that everyone has enough time to make the appropriate arrangement. So as of this point, we haven't made anything for next year.
Yeah, I agree with that. I was just curious, like, you know, who knows when we're going to find out, you know, when we're going back to school, and then how do we have enough time for routes settled and squared away?
Well, well, exactly. I mean, the governor's going to have to give us unless they, you know, rewrite all the purchasing statutes and code, the governor's going to have to give everybody enough time to procure whatever we need to procure for next next September. And if if school is going to look differently and we have we need different bus routes, we're going to have to have time to go through that bid process.
Yeah.
I wish I knew.
I just wanted to call attention for the public to something Mrs. Doherty said. So we're talking about approving tonight the demographer moving forward, which we discuss a lot in the strategic planning process. I just want to make sure that people realize that we are voting on hiring a demographer this evening to move that strategic planning process forward in case they missed that. And moving on to curriculum and instruction.
Okay, everyone. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Robin.
Okay, so on May 19, a couple of members of the curriculum committee met with some of the members of the special services committee and a group of administrators for a joint meeting. And one of the main things we discussed was a new change to the elementary schedule, which is based on an abundance of feedback from the strategic planning process, but also based on the new G and T mandate. The schools, the 12 elementary schools, I'm sorry, 11 will all be implementing WIN Time daily. WIN stands for What I Need, and it's a 30-minute block of time, and it's taken a little bit off of each of the academic areas that, you know, there are only so many hours in the day and a lot of mandates, so they had to get creative. And this 30-minute period is a great time for students daily to work on projects. They could get pulled out for gifted and talented, Wilson Occupational Therapy speech. It's a time that students could read, catch up with their teachers, meet in small groups. So I think it should be really positive. We also discussed this week a lot of new curriculum adoptions and new programs that are coming. The board all had the opportunity to look at all of these last week on the private portal. There was a lot of information, rewrites in many areas, new textbooks. Most programs that we're going with have a considerable online component, but there are so many and too many to discuss, but a few that I thought were particularly interesting in the arts dance two honors, which is for the Arts Academy. English three and four, which is the 11th and 12th grade English. It's a new title, and it's consistent with English one and two. The curricula was aligned with the New Jersey State Learning Standards and also the NJSLA. It includes more book clubs, independent reading, a lot of online resources. English four will also have a lot of career readiness components such as resume writing, which I think is really interesting. Geometry and geometry honors, they'll be moving along with the Big Ideas Program, which is a fantastic program and with a lot of online resources, videos. And in history, two new semester classes for high school students. One is Holocaust, Genocide, and Modern Humanity. This would be available to 11th and 12th graders, and there's a partnership with Kane University, so it's a dual enrollment class, which means that they can get high school credits and college credits at the same time. And then there's also now abnormal psych, which is an honors class, which is available also to juniors and seniors, and this is done with a partnership with Seton Hall University, also a dual enrollment course. And again, lots of updates to the curricula, you know, across the board, a lot of rewrites. Mrs. Pecus, if you want to jump in now, if I if there's any other areas you want to add a little bit more detail.
Okay, we have our representatives from our curriculum department, our supervisors and directors, as well as student services, our special education director, Ms. Shrek, and of course, Dr. Tiedemann, as well as one of Mr. Paulson here. If there's any questions, and I'll also give any hands or any questions coming up just yet about any of the things that Mrs. Della just reported on. But I know, Mr. Paulson, I don't know if you want to give just a brief overview of the change.
Kim, your volume seems to have gone down. We can't really hear you. Kim? We can't hear you. I don't know what's going on, something with your volume.
I thought it was just me that I couldn't hear, but.
No.
Let me see, maybe it's my mic. Let me try to switch over. Mr. Paulson, if you, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
We can hear you a little bit now.
Mr. Paulson, do you just want to give a brief overview of some of the highlights to the changes? I know some of your you and your colleagues have started to have meetings with your PTA and your parent groups explaining the changes, the overall, just the major revisions to the elementary day?
Yeah, so the the main, one of the main changes that that has influenced our schedule changing is the PE requirements that are required by the state now and that cannot can no longer be taught by our our teachers in in an alternative way with in terms of how they we would incorporate the responsive classroom work. So that challenge, along with the fact that the computer standards are coming out of the state. Looking challenges with the state changing the computer requirements, phys ed. Hold up. There we go. Those two things are really what weighed a lot. And then really looking at how do we add that with the minutes we have in the day and balancing that to give our students the best possible exposure to stuff? So one of the things that we decided that we would look at is bringing computers back as a special. And then that would look differently at the primary level as opposed to the upper elementary level. Also, meeting the mandates for phys ed. So phys ed in a to meet those mandates, we have to go to a six-day cycle now. And in a six-day cycle, that's going to limit with four of those days with 150-minute mandate, 180-minute mandate, we have to use four of those days for phys ed. Okay, that's a non-negotiable. We can't change that. That's something that the state requires that we have to abide by now. So that leaves two days for specials to get in what we had. Now, if we kept everything status quo, we'd have to cut a special and just go with two. As elementary principals, we felt strongly that cutting any one of them would not be the best option. So we we looked at the option of, well, we have to add computers, or we're going to have to definitely add it next year. If we add it now and add these four options as two half-year courses, then we could fit them into the the puzzle of an elementary schedule. So I know that my colleagues and I were not, it's not that we wanted to, I don't want to use the word cut. I think we're just making the puzzle fit a little better in a way that our kids can still be exposed to the arts, to Spanish, to foreign language, and begin to meet the mandated the mandated requirements for the state and the computer technology that's going to be released very soon. Obviously, if we had more time in our day and things like that, and more days in the year, we could get even more creative with it, but we we work with the within the confines of our contractual agree or obligations and also the state requirements. And that's what led us to, I would say, this redesigned schedule. I don't want to look at it as we're losing anything. I think we're really going to with the teachers, fine tune. All right, what are the essential things that can give our students the best experience in Middletown without cutting anything? And I think that was the big component because we did discuss originally, what what are we going to cut? And we really felt strongly that our students should be given the opportunity to have everything, although it's not as long as we would love. At least we're still giving them the opportunity, and and we know that as we move down this this avenue or this road of of uncertainty with mandates and now in this situation, I'm happy to say that we didn't cut it because now we can actually expand on it possibly. So that's kind of what led us to it. It wasn't anything that it really came down to the PE minutes and meeting those requirements and then also not wanting to cut anything. That's kind of what I was, that's what we were talking about, Ms. Pecus.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So to that vein, Ms. Roscoe, Mr. Graziano, Mrs. Morales, do you just want to touch upon the collaboration efforts that you've embarked in along with the principals in ensuring that our students are receiving the integrated and diverse exposure to the different core core as well as special subject areas that Mr. Paulson just described?
Hi, Mrs. Pecus, Stephen Graziano here. I want to speak to the whole process and what it how it came to be what it is and and, you know, tapping on to what Mr. Paulson said. You know, we don't take joy in saying that we had to take minutes away from specifically the arts and world language as well when it came down to this, but we definitely worked really hard together to make sure that there was still that touch of art and music and world language for the students going throughout the year in elementary school. We we thought outside the grid, and we started thinking about how can we, for the students with that true passion, and I'm speaking for the arts for that, that we can help them moving forward, saying they're going to maybe have a half year of art or music, but have them have a touch with it for the entire year. And and thank you for the administration for working with me and myself as well, coming up with these ideas to put forth the idea of putting clubs together that as teachers would have stipends to be able to provide art and music for the students throughout the entire year. Stipends will be provided for teachers to be able to have concerts for them as well. But the most important part is, and we look at it, is those students who have that passion. The passion for the arts and music will be able to partake in these clubs even for the half of the year that it may not be during their school day. So on behalf of the Arts Department, I am I'm at least grateful for that, that we were able to work together in conjunction to say that we're going to put something together so the students who do have that passion will be able to continue to have that throughout the year.
Okay, are there any questions?
I can.
That's great. I think that's a great thing. Glad glad we're doing that to make up that difference, at least somewhat make up that difference. Thank you, Mr. Little.
Mrs. Morales, I think you were gonna
Yeah, I was going to just briefly, right, briefly for the computer science standards. So we've been following the 2014 standards here in Middletown, and we've been, you know, very proud of the work we've been doing with educational technology, and we've really done this through integration. So we were able to really successfully integrate the standards into our core subject areas through our coaching model with our amazing K5 EdTechs. But with the new 2020 standards that were recently released, the level of rigor is not something that can just be easily integrated into subject areas. It's very much standalone. Standard 8.1 is computer science, 8.2 is design thinking, and 9.4 is life literacy and key skills. These are things like computing systems and data and analysis, algorithms and programming, information and media literacy. So these are things that truly are extremely rigorous, and they're banded now into K2 and 3.5. So it's very specific as to what our kids are expected to have to do in those areas. So we felt the only way to really do that equitably and with fidelity so that every student receives that instruction is to create a special, as Mr. Paulson said.
Okay, and one last piece to the puzzle that Mr. Okay, and one last, um, piece to the puzzle that Mr. Paulson was referring to is, um, the assurance that we had to provide and give that students who need supplemental support service. So that could be, um, as I think someone mentioned before, I think it was Mrs. Stella, students who may need, uh, support with Wilson or Project Read to address reading comprehension issues or dyslexia, um, issues or, or deficits in, in their reading comprehension or decoding abilities, as well as students who are eligible for GNT services or enrichment, as well as our intervention students, our math and literacy, uh, students who receive tiered instruction with our reading development and our math specialists, um, and our ESL students, you know, who receive ESL instruction, that there's a time in the day that they can receive those services when they're not missing core instruction. And that was really at the heart of what, of the introduction, the formal introduction at all schools of the WIN time, the One ID Now, um, that dedicated block of time that, to, to the best of our effort, that's when those types of services will be scheduled for students. Of course, it's, again, there's a limited day and I get a lot of students in, so it may not work for every student's schedule, every class's schedule, but when possible, and to the best of our ability, we will, um, try to schedule students at that time so that, again, they're not missing any core instruction from the classroom. So there was, uh, discussion, as Mrs. Stella referred to, uh, with the curriculum department and, uh, the boards, student, members of the board's Student Services Committee and Dr. Tiedemann and Ms. Strick, um, I don't know if you and Ms. Marrow, if you want to talk about some of the changes to our core subject instructional minutes, literacy, math, and how that will, uh, relate to students' IEPs and their programs.
Hi, everyone. So there will be some need for amendments of IEPs that were written beforehand in order to match the elementary instructional minutes that have changed. However, will also allow opportunity for considering students for supplemental instruction as necessary and taking a look at each individual student and how many minutes they may need of special education support and how we can have them spend the maximum amount of time in gen ed, getting the benefit from not only the minutes of the regular class placement, but also of supplemental instruction. But it will require some contact between the case managers and the parents to make a few adjustments.
And again, I just want to reinforce the goal of that is the partnership with student services and curriculum to try to provide as much instruction in the inclusive setting of the general education classroom. By introducing supplemental support service, um, you know, students can receive additional instruction beyond their in-class support or their pull-out resource programs, uh, whether that be in the classroom with, with a teacher or if, if need be in an alternative location. But again, the goal is to increase, um, the amount of time the students are spending in the least restricted environment and still meeting their needs, um, individually.
I have a question, Mrs. Pecus. What happens if we don't go back to the classroom next year? How are you going to implement all this? You're going to do this all through Zoom or meets, Google meets? How are we doing this?
Are you referring to the special subject schedule, the six-day rotation?
Yeah. How are we doing all this stuff?
Yeah, so even this year, Mrs. Caminiti, we already have our special subject area teachers have Zoom lessons with the students. Um, and it is supplemented by a choice board activity. But next year, you know, if, if we need to extend our virtual home instruction, that would be an area that we would look to, um, and I'm seeing I have unstable connection here, so I'm hoping it's not interrupting my feed. That would be an area that we're, that we would look to provide or do further revision to. But we already are doing Zoom lessons with our special subject area teachers, with our students.
Okay. Also, my question is for the special needs that we're doing. We said certain things. We're, you know, we're on quarantine, but we're not in a way, right? We can be together, like, what about some of these children? Are they getting what they need for all these kids, especially, uh, the children that have IEPs and stuff? I mean, like, are they, are they being evaluated? Are they getting everything they need, these children?
So we are conducting evaluations to the maximum extent possible. We cannot at this time do one-to-one testing of students. So certain evaluations such as educational, psychological, functional behavioral, OT, PT, they all have to be put on hold until we get the go-ahead to do one-to-one evaluation safely. CST members are conducting social histories with parents. We are providing tele-practice psychiatrics and neurologicals as warranted. So we're doing what we can while we wait until we can safely move on. They are, are all kinds of virtual services going on. Meetings with parents take place every day. The case managers remain in constant communication to ensure that we're meeting their needs as much as we possibly can. Nothing can take the place of the therapist or the teacher and the child being together in one place and having that interaction.
Right.
But in the meantime, we'll, we'll just do it to the maximum extent possible and all look forward to when we actually can come back together again.
Okay. Thanks.
I have something I wanted to add to that. I like the idea of the WIN program. Are we keeping Core Plus More or does that get changed too?
Dr. Tiedemann, I'll start because I see you got to unmute yourself. So this, we are going to be introducing supplemental support, uh, which is similar to the Core Plus More, but I'll let Dr. Tiedemann explain how Core Plus More, uh, really isn't appropriate to code. And so now we're going to match our language with code. I see unmuted. I kind of, I set you up there, unmute.
Okay. Right, so Core Plus More is really just a district term, but it translates into whether it be pull-out resource or pull-out supplemental instruction or whether it be in-class resource, in-class supplemental instruction. So it's, it's an equivalent support, it's just on a different name that matches what's in the code.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say I was very excited, you know, when our committee had that meeting and talked about this WIN period. I know that it's used in other districts. And again, it's, you know, there may be some issues with some students and we'll have to sort of work that out going forward. The other reason why I think this is so attractive is we are now trying to move towards more inclusion in our district. And I think, you know, even though this is a small step, this is an important step for us, especially for, you know, all of our children who are, you know, getting pulled out for IEP, you know, resources and things that they need. But at least now this will give them more time in the general ed classrooms so they don't have to miss, you know, as much stuff, which I think is really great. And the other thing I just wanted to say before is I really appreciate the further discussion on what we had to do or what you all had to do in juggling the elementary school schedules with all these new standards that are coming in place and especially our dedication to try and figure this out, to keep some of the specials like arts and music still going. I mean, it's not ideal, as we all said, but I have to say, I was very upset after our last meeting when there was that patch article that was very misleading and said that we basically cut all of the arts when we didn't, when I know some districts are maybe moving towards that, but we didn't hear. And so I actually appreciate the further discussion to clarify that.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. That was definitely part of our intention, you know, was to clarify that.
I would also, if I could just chime in real quickly, I'd like to say that's why it's so important we ask the public, and we have a pretty big public joining us tonight, to look at that Friday newsletter because we really work hard to try to clarify curricular and program changes in our Friday or just further explanation to our curricular program, uh, in our, in our Friday newsletters. So please look for that. We'll continue to send it out through email, social media, um, on the website and, and please look for it. Thanks.
And, and I do want to say one additional thing is that our district created a passion for the arts and we know we have that. And I am so grateful for that and the position that I have to be an adversary for it. And thank you to the administration for working so hard and hearing and listening and getting us to where we are right now because we could have lost so much. And they are there, they're passionate and they're supportive. And thank you for that.
You are a true advocate, Stephen. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions about, um, any of the items that we discussed during our committee report and/or the new curricula or revised curricula or program adoptions that were shared and posted to the portal? Or any agenda items? I think the only other remaining agenda item, I believe it's our, uh, some of our school nurses are going to participate in a virtual professional development on, uh, the, about the COVID crisis, COVID pandemic. That's on the voting agenda. Okay. I think we're done, Mrs. Stella.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to student activities, Mary Ellen, Pat Renella.
Yep. Um, well, when we put this, um, promotion and graduation ceremonies on the agenda, we had actually a definitive plan for virtual, um, at the graduation. Um, and then on Friday, the governor came out and said that there would be some permission for outdoor in-person graduations. Today, the NJ DOE was supposed to come out with guidelines on that and they postponed that. They have not. So right now our plans are on hold. I mean, we think our, our virtual plans were, were actually very good. They had, um, all the traditional components. We had the flag salute, the national anthem sung, the traditional speeches, you know, the, the principal, the valedictorian, the salatorian, the superintendent, the board president, the recognition of the top 10, certification by the principal, reading of the names with pictures and also a personalized, uh, portion where students actually could personalize, uh, the montage, the pictures that happened before and after the, uh, the, um, the ceremony. So we may use components of that if we, if we can, um, you know, if, if we can fit our, um, configuration into the protocols and requirements that are going to be put out. We don't know what the limits are, you know, how many students can be present or total people can be present at a time. So we're working on that as soon as we find out what those, and we're hoping they'll come out by the end of the week. And obviously, high school is our priority right now, um, in terms of, you know, any new plans that will be made based on what comes out from the NJ DOE. The fifth grade promotions and the middle school promotions are still virtual. Um, and that's, you know, pretty much all we have right now. We've, um, you know, there's been a lot of, of change every time we think we have it done and something changes again. So we're just going to keep being flexible and do the best we can for our students. Back to school nights for next year, I emailed them to all the board members. If you could just take a look, if you have any questions or concerns, just email me. I'd like to get them out and post it on the website by the end of next week. So if I have to make some adjustments, we can. They were made, um, in consultation with all the principals. They selected dates, you know, first choice, second choice, so we can all fit them in. We use the same, um, you know, restrictions as we did last year. Three to, you know, no more than three in one day and, you know, split them up so different sides of town are on the same day so parents wouldn't have conflicts. So anyway, if you get a chance, just look at them, you know, by the end of next week. Um, we also have a voting item. It's a research study by a doctoral student from Seton Hall. The study is on, um, the perceptions of, um, teachers on the gender of a administrator on their leadership. So that's just, uh, teacher surveys and teacher interviews. It's all, um, it's all voluntary and confidential. And that's it for student activities. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, on graduate. I know we don't have distinctive plans, but obviously there's going to be social distancing issues. Are you guys, um, planning on breaking it down into smaller numbers and doing multiple graduations?
We have to see what the governor says. You know, we've heard rumors everywhere, but only 25 graduates at a time, which is, you know, really difficult for a high school that has over 400 graduates. That's nine ceremonies. So we have to, we're, we're not jumping to conclusions at this point. We're going to see what the restrictions are and we're going to try to fix something into, into that. And yes, we, there will be, whatever comes out, we know that there will be, um, social distancing requirements and, you know, it's, we will definitely abide by them.
Today I was on a phone call with all the high school districts in Monmouth County superintendents. One of the things that we really talked about to, to minimize the exposure is that those, obviously those in-person, um, ceremonies would not be consistent with traditional. So the components that we, that we do in the virtual, we probably will not replicate or have the time to replicate in what we are doing in place. The in-place is to give students an opportunity to return, um, to their school and have an, an opportunity to walk across the stage. And, you know, we don't know the capacity of, obviously if there are smaller groups than, uh, an entire graduation class in a high school, then, and we had to replicate that multiple times, that would cause issues with being able to fit all of that in, um, in a day. So we're really going to have to be creative and I'm so grateful to the building-level administration, Mrs. Walker, they have put together multiple scenarios. We were really hoping that the guidelines would come today. We got an email at the end of the day from the executive county superintendent saying they weren't ready for release yet, but as soon as they are, they're going to send them out to us. We'll, we will bring that back to the building-level team. Mrs. Walker will lead that with the building administrators, building high school administrative team and figure out the best way. Those in-place, uh, celebrations are really just going to be focused on providing an opportunity for our students to have the traditional opportunity to walk across the stage. It obviously won't be at Monmouth University like it normally was. It won't be in front of a large group, right? It won't be a large group setting, but we just want to give them, um, the best opportunity that we can. And again, very grateful to the building-level administrative team, Mr. Renella, Mrs. Walker. Mrs. Walker's led this and everybody's worked so hard. So thank you, Mrs. Walker.
Bill, I have a question and, and Mrs. Walker, I've got a question. Given how unique this is, especially for the seniors in high school or graduating, have the, the principals been working with student government representatives in order to, to take the temperature of the students to see, you know, what they're interested in and, you know, you'll get input from them into designing because this is basically a one-off sort of year?
Thanks for bringing that up. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Walker.
Yeah, they have been working with students, um, since we went virtual. The, the students are very interested in, they have, you know, reached out. They actually did a survey, um, on what the students would be interested in. Um, and then they working with individuals, you know, groups of students to, uh, basically gauge the temperature of what they, uh, what they anticipate they can have and what they would want.
Great question, Mr. Frankel. Thank you.
I, I, I have a few more questions. I, obviously we have an advantage because we said we weren't going to do our graduation until the first week in August. Does that still stand?
We're not sure now. It, it depends on what the, it, where, everything is really in flux right now because it depends on if it's, you know, if there's, um, the ability to have a larger scale, you know, event, we may have to push it off that long just so that we can organize it. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of rental equipment and organization and coordination with police and all that. If it's smaller, um, groups, we may be able to have it earlier. And, and where we're thinking that earlier is probably better for most students. You know, in August, summer to start going away. So, um, you know, it just kind of depends on, on, on what the restrictions are, what the guidance says.
Mrs. Walker, principals really thought we ought to show our commitment to trying to do some form of in-person. We said we would push it back as far as, as August. There were some school districts said, if we could do it in July, we'll do it. If not, we're not going to be able to do it. We, we pushed it as far as we could. We pushed it as far as we could to try to show our commitment to some form of, you know, onsite, in-place, more traditional opportunity for students. Mrs. Walker informed me today that after lengthy discussion with principals today, if it were to open up on July 6th the way we're expecting, some form of in-place, and just, we're just not sure exactly what that would be, that what they're hearing from the school community is they'd rather do it earlier rather than later. So, we'll definitely take the input of the school community, our students, and our parents as it relates to that timeframe, and try to gauge, if possible, you know, what the consensus is, if there is one.
Yeah. I think, I think we also have to keep in mind, if we're doing it on the football fields, that the turf field is 20 degrees hotter in the sun. So, you know, looking at the times that we might have to do it so that people could actually enjoy the ceremony that we're giving them might be a consideration. The other thing also is that we started to get emails today from 8th grade parents about having 8th grade graduations. So, I think it might be important to verify that again. Are we gonna revisit that, or are we done with that?
Two things. One is, when going back to the field, one of the things we would have to rent is a floor for the field. So, if, you know, for a full-scale graduation. So, you know, that's just something to consider. Right now, our priority is on the high school. The middle schools are continuing with their plans for virtual. We have to find out, you know, to what extent we can have in-person, to what extent we have to spread this out over multiple days to get all the students through, depending on the limits of students at one time. There's so many variables. It's, it's really, right now, we're really considering and putting our efforts into high school and waiting for the guidelines.
I, I get the waiting for the guidelines, and I understand that. But I think that if there's a possibility that there's gonna be a middle school graduation, we should let people know we're considering. But if we're not, they just need to know where we're going, you know. And if we're not gonna consider it, then say you're not gonna consider it. But if there's a possibility and a sign of hope that it could possibly be done, you know, as long as we're telling them we're still thinking about it and that it really depends on the guidelines. I mean, I think everybody just wants to know, is it done, is it a done deal? Or is there still a possibility they could have a graduation?
I don't think there's a chance that there's the traditional promotion ceremony that they're used to. I don't think that there's gonna be anything close to that for high school or middle school. But like I said, it just depends on what the state says, whether it's even possible for middle school.
Okay, I think that's all people need to know. Is there still a slight chance, or is it completely?
If there is, if there's going to be anything, which I don't know, because we don't know the guidelines, it would not look like a traditional ceremony.
Yeah. Yeah, I think everybody, you know, is counting that.
And, and we are going forward with the virtual ceremony because of that. You know, the virtual ceremony is going to be, you know, more traditional, have the traditional components.
Now, if we do the high school, if we do the high school graduation because the go-through is okay to go, are we still doing the virtual too?
It depends. We will, because we're not gonna have, they're not gonna allow us to have a traditional, you know, graduation with 2,000 people. So, you know, to get all these components in nine times, we wouldn't be able to do that. So, we're still gonna go with the virtual. It's a really nice ceremony. And then we'll do added in-person, depending on the guidelines.
All right. I just think people wanna know, you know, what we're thinking. Let them know it's still going.
I think it's important to let people know that the Board of Education is taking our lead from the governor. And the governor has to lay out these guidelines for us. And our superintendent is following those guidelines. And I think that people will understand that, especially people who watch his updates every day. And they understand that this is a fluid process right now. And we have to be concerned with children's safety first and foremost. And I think, I think the public understands that.
And Mr. Kirkpatrick and Dr. Cartier
All right.
Working with Mrs. Walker have also been communicating directly with the senior families, the families of the seniors and the seniors through email. And we'll continue to do that as more information becomes available.
Great. All right, that brings us to shared services. We have no report for shared services this evening. We have nothing on the agenda. And so, we can move forward to strategic planning. For our strategic planning section this evening, we're going to have a presentation of the goals. Thank you to all the members of the public who participated in our strategic planning forums and our survey that we put out. 2,700 of you answered our survey. And it really helped us to come up with these goals as we move forward. These are goals right now. In September, we'll be laying out more of the action plans. So, with that being said, I'd like to ask Mrs. Walker to present this for us.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen with you, so.
Fancy.
Yeah. Hold on.
Thank you.
Hold on, why isn't it there? Can everybody see that?
I can see it. Mary Ellen, can the public see this as well?
I don't know. Chris, the public can see this, correct?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to present the draft of the 2020-2025 Strategic Plan Goals and Objectives. These goals and objectives are reflective of the large amount of input we receive from our school community, identifying the top priorities for the district. In August, we began the process of gathering extensive data from our school community to gain an understanding of our strengths and our needs. The first step we took was to send out a survey to which 2,700 community members shared their perspective. This was followed by seven community meetings that took place between October and February to gather more data from our community members. In December, in the midst of the community forums, district administrators also presented a district profile. This was a deep dive into the district finances, facilities, enrollments, academic achievement. And it was meant to inform the process and ultimately help our community identify priorities. So, the top priorities that the community identified were used to create our district mission, values, belief statements. These were then used to create our goals that were reflective of the top priorities. So, that was all connected. So, our goals are based on the vision, the mission, the values, and the belief statements, which were built on the top priorities identified by the community members during the forums and the surveys. The goals that you're gonna see tonight are not in order of importance. They're all vital to the continued growth and improvement of our district. Goal one focuses on the importance of supporting the social-emotional well-being of our community members and the link between social-emotional well-being and student achievement. The need for goal, the need for a goal focusing on social-emotional well-being is that the community identified this as a top priority and also captured it in the mission, values, and belief statements. For each goal, we've listed on the slide the specific components of the mission, value, and belief statements that align with that goal. The objectives for goal one focus on creating a plan to support the social-emotional needs of our school community. Objective one is centered on the development of individual plans for community members, including students, staff, and families, to address their immediate needs and aligns with student personalized learning opportunities. An example would be individual student and family counseling offered by the YMCA in our school buildings. So, these are more individual, immediate needs. Objective two centers on school climate and more global programs for social-emotional learning initiatives such as Responsive Classroom and the Choose to Be Nice program. Our second goal encompasses the priority the community put on increasing equity and
Mary Ellen?
Yes?
I'm sorry. I just wanna pause after every goal to see if anyone from the board wants to interject anything. So, for goal number one, either the chair of the committee or anyone from the board, if you'd like to speak up just to add to that. Okay, Mary Ellen, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Goal number two encompasses the priority the community put on increasing equity and opportunities and to ensure we meet all, the needs of all learners. This priority was translated into our mission, values, and beliefs as noted on the slide. Objective one focuses on the implementation of practices and methodologies that increase opportunities for equity inclusion across all student populations and programs. This will explain, this will expand our ability to educate students together. For example, it'll provide support for general ed and special ed students together in supplemental instruction programs. This goal encompasses all special populations of students. Students with disability, gifted and talented, low socioeconomic students, bilingual students, et cetera. Objective two speaks to expanding the capacity of staff to effectively implement these opportunities through engaging in targeted professional development. And objective three addresses promoting a culture and climate in our schools and in our community that embraces diversity and inclusion. All right, that's, that's it for two. Are there any?
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the parents who contributed to this, who pushed for inclusion. I really commend them for coming out to all these meetings. Some of them shared some beautiful stories and really gave the board a moment to really step into their shoes and understand what it's like to, to push so hard for your children to be included. And we understand, we feel for you, and this board supports you. Thank you to the friends of different learners, diverse learners, sorry, Middletown Friends of Diverse Learners, who are also very important during this process. Does anyone else wanna speak on this, on the board?
Yeah, so I'll say a few words. I was the chair of this particular goal. And I think, you know, Mrs. Rogers, as you were just saying, throughout all of this on both sides, both the board side, you know, all of us who are tasked with this, as well as administration, is we had our, you know, objective basically being, how do we push again the district towards more inclusion for all students? And I think the other important piece behind this, as we continue to sort of flesh out what the action items are going to be for each of these under goal number two, is we wanted to make sure that we had the professional development piece in there for all staff, because we wanna make sure that they are given the tools that they need, especially in all the general ed classes, to, you know, to basically have them feel confident that they're ready to have all of the students in for more periods of time. And again, so that way, we can make sure that all the kids are getting, right, that same standard of learning, which I think is extremely important. And then just the other piece of this is, you know, again, as you were saying, it was really great to hear during all of the forums how much the school community was really wanting us to move towards more inclusion. And so, we will just continue to reach out to them during this process too, to make sure that we're fostering that in the community as well as inside the school.
Yes, and thank you to Dr. Tiedemann too for her leadership on this, and Dr. George for embracing some new ideas to push us towards inclusion. I think it's all been such a positive experience. And I've seen a lot of change this year, and I'm very excited for what's to come with the strategic plan now and the future.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll go to goal three. Goal three stresses the importance of personalized learning to student success as identified by the priorities of the community again. Objective one is to ensure consistent practice and personalized learning through data analysis to ensure we're meeting the academic and social-emotional needs of students and the professional development needs of staff, as well as ensuring we're involving parents as collaborators in using data to assist their children. Objective two speaks to equitable opportunities for students in personalized learning to empower them to become capable of collaborating to address local and global issues with the support and involvement of their parents. Parent, you know, involvement is very important. Objective three identifies the need to expand personalized learning opportunities in the virtual setting and balance the use of technology with action-oriented opportunities to keep students connected and engaged. We all see how important this objective is now that we are in virtual environment. This just points to the unknown in education today and in the world today, and the need for a strategic plan that can lead us through many changes and challenges that we will face within the next five years and beyond. We probably wouldn't even have thought of this objective six months ago. And that's the end of goal three?
I think that's important, number three, because as we go forward to possibly reopening in September, we do not know. There's so much uncertainty as to what it'll look like in September for our children to go back to school. Will it be virtual? Will it be partially virtual? We need to be prepared for these things, and I think it's great that we're thinking along those lines. And did anyone else from the board? Anyone else from the board wanna speak up? The chair or, or anyone else? Okay, thanks, Mary Ellen.
Okay. Goal four realizes the importance that staff and community partnerships play in education, in educating our students and supporting their personnel, personnel, sorry, personal learning needs and interests. Like the other goal, this goal is rooted in our community's identified priorities. Objective one is clear on the need to build strong community partnerships. Examples would be program-based internships and career day events that would broaden and support students' academic paths and provide opportunities to learn about different professions. For example, partnerships with organizations like the MAC would expose our students to the arts and provide opportunities beyond the classroom to explore these interests. And this is even beyond the Arts Academy, you know, other students that are, may not be in the Arts Academy. Objective two focuses on supporting students' social-emotional well-being through community-based programs. Students would benefit from targeted sport from community programs such as Crossroads and have the opportunity to work with other groups to give back to the community, like the Police Explorers or the Junior EMTs or Junior Firefighters, organizations like that. Objective three, the committee felt that there were so many valuable community and school-based programs, such as the LEEDS program on good decision-making and substance abuse prevention that our police present to our 5th graders, that, that we should work to expand these types of opportunities. They also felt that we should further support the community at large to become involved in our parent-run organizations, PTAs, PTOs, PFAs, Middletown Friends of Diverse Learners, et cetera. They felt a special focus would include reaching out to senior citizens. And that is the last objective for goal four. Community partnerships.
Okay, I was the chair of that one. I would say this is pretty self-explanatory. But I will say that I really enjoyed writing these goals with the administrators, getting to know them a little bit more and see what our students are so lucky to have here at Middletown. Just a collaborative effort with our administrators. My kids are talking to a lot. And it was just a really wonderful experience to be able to involve ourselves, the board, and the administrators together collaboratively, working for the betterment of this district. And it was a really wonderful experience. I just wanna thank all the administrators who were involved.
Okay. Okay, goal five. Focus on fiscal responsibility for financial stability in order to ensure we can continue to provide a quality education to all our students. This was a priority of the community and is reflected in our mission, values, and belief statements in several places. Objective one is to increase our efficiency in alignment with state adequacy guidelines for personnel and for personnel and facilities, as well as the federal funding guidelines, in order to manage student enrollments and staffing, to ensure we provide all students with a thorough and efficient education. Being efficient and equitable are the key components to this objective, to continue to provide quality education for our students. Objective two builds on the need for efficient fiscal management in order to implement our programs, district directives, and state and federal mandates, to ensure all our students receive a thorough and efficient education in a least restrictive environment. Objective three requires the district to seek out and allocate financial resources in order to implement state and federal mandates that are mostly unfunded, in an equitable manner across the district. An example is the requirement for additional physical education and health at the elementary level, that's difficult to schedule, and is not optimum for students in many of our schools due to limited gymnasium space. Although this is a facilities problem, it's ultimately a fiscal problem, just one of the many that we're going to need to face moving forward. And that's the last goal for our financial goal number five.
Great. This, yeah, this is a really important one. So yes, Nick, you want to chime in?
Well, I just, I think that John might be having some audio issues. He's, he's the Chair of our Committee on this goal, but I just want to reinforce a couple of things that are actually here on the slide, which is that one of the big topics that we discussed in these conversations we had with administrators, building-level personnel, and then Board members, was the need not only to find the financial resources in what, what will prove to be a financially restrictive period that we're moving into, but also to work through every decision we make to equitably, you know, provide for our students across the district. And so, you know, a lot of our decision-making will be driven by the other goals that were discussed by Mrs. Walker, most notably the idea of equity and making sure that we are able to, you know, provide for all of our schools, for all of our elementaries, for all of our middles, you know, equally and adequately. So I just wanted to focus on that and make sure that people are aware of that.
Nick, were there examples discussed in these committees on, like, say, in the future, looking at one high school, closing more elementary schools?
Yeah, Joan, I think that we're actually going to talk a little bit more about that in goal six.
Okay.
But yeah, let's, let's pin it, let's pin that for a moment and talk about goal six.
That's fine.
But for goal five, we did talk about efficiently using funds, right, between all, all the, all seventeen, sixteen now, schools, right? So we did discuss that, and it's important for the public to understand, because we do get told that we're not being transparent enough, and this is us being transparent right now. Tonight on the agenda, we are hiring a company, right, to do the, the, the work that would need to be done to look into something like, Mrs. Minuwe is saying, like a redistricting, or like a consolidation, the demographer, to do that kind of work. So just so we're clear with the public, so that they don't think we're hiding anything from them, this is what we got, the feedback we got from the survey, from the multiple strategic planning meetings, this is where we are as a district, and it's important to talk about those things. So thank you, Mrs. Minuwe, for bringing that up. All right, can we move on to goal six?
Okay. All right. Goal six is our last goal, but it's equally as important as all the others. Investment and stewardship of our infrastructure for student success. Facilities and capacity concerns were raised frequently during our, our survey. Objective one is to create a plan to ensure that our facilities have adequate and appropriate space to implement current curricular mandates and initiatives. It also calls for an assessment of our facilities in a strategic and efficient manner, with consideration of facilities adequacy guidelines, including common and multi-use spaces, recommended security improvements, and recommended health and safety improvements. As you can see, goals five and six, along with their objectives, are closely aligned and interdependent. We need a strategic and efficient plan to ensure our facilities meet the needs of our students today, in five years, and well beyond that. However, we need the financial ability to carry out those plans. Objective two takes a look at the district holistically, and requires us to develop a master facilities plan that allows us to focus investment in campuses that are suitable for long-term use. We have to make measured, take measured steps that will meet the needs of learners for much longer than five years, and we have to do it in a manner that most efficiently uses our resources, both our facility resources and our financial resources. That's it, there's only two goals, objectives for goal six.
So, all right, so I'll weigh in, weigh in on this, as well as, as the Chair of this, as the Board Chair of this discussion committee. One thing that Mrs. Walker said that, that is pertinent, is that we will be taking measured steps over the next five years as part of this plan. And to go back to what Mrs. Minuwe brought up, all sorts of ideas have been floated, both by members of the public, as well as members of the Administration and members of the Board. Some of the ideas are a little more blue sky than others, some of them are very concrete, and, and some of them are more sort of, you know, what-if thinking. Rather than getting bogged down in what I would call historical thinking about our district, what we decided to do is take a cue from the public through the strategic planning sessions, and as Mrs. Rogers noted, we have hired a, we are in the process of hiring a demographic consultancy, so it's not just a demographer per se, who's just going to, you know, lay some numbers out at our feet and tell us to go do what we wish, but we've hired a firm called Malone, or we're working to hire a firm called Malone and McBroom, who specializes in working with districts to understand the current and future use of the buildings, how best to utilize current spaces, how to lay out a vision for the district over the next X number of years, as we would define with them, as we work with them. So, you know, at this point right now, to say it's early stages would be an understatement, but what we want to communicate to the community is that this Board is taking upon itself to seriously look at our infrastructure. As Dr. George said, you know, the average age of our buildings is in the 70-plus years. You know, we built a high school, Middletown South, in the 1970s, and, you know, it's closer to 50 years old than we'd probably like it to be, and that's our new high school. So all of our facilities require a really hard look, and we felt it would be important to bring experts, outside experts, who've done this in other districts, and who can advise us what a realistic plan is. We don't want to end up with a pie-in-the-sky plan, we don't want to end up with a plan that's not achievable. We need modern facilities and sustainable facilities for our students as soon as possible. So it was a lot, but any of the other folks on the Committee want to weigh in there?
No, I think, I think that was well said. You know, most importantly, to use taxpayer dollars most efficiently, and to provide all our children with an equitable experience. You know, we talk about keeping class size under a certain number of students in each class. I know that was, that was a really a big concern of the majority of our public. We talk about how we can do that, and this is the information that the demographer will look into for us, and advise us as to how best to achieve that goal that we, you know, that we discovered during this process with the public. Yeah, so I think that was, that was, that was pretty transparent, Mr. DeFranco, thank you. Anybody else want to speak up from the Board?
Hi, it's John. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Hi, John, we can, yes.
I apologize. But as Nick was saying, Malone and McBroom, they're demographer, but I think that we use the word demographer a lot. You know, demographers look at population. You know, the, Malone and McBroom have planner abilities as well, have experience working with engineers, which, you know, we have Speesal, we have the other, the other engineering firm that we have is Onetta. So we have, you know, we have a long-range facilities plan, which we've already done pieces, which is maintenance. So the planner is going to come in and work with them, work on the, you know, demographer end of things, and come up with ideas. I mean, the bottom line is, like, our buildings are old, and, you know, when you talk about making investments, it's not just, it's classrooms, right? We talked about goal five, and I appreciate that, Mr. DeFranco, for covering that, where we try to allocate and use our resources efficiently, you know, because we have to execute all these things, social, emotional, all these other goals. We have to be able to execute across the board for all of our students, and, you know, end of the day, we have to get the programs up and running that we want to run. And, you know, all of our elementary schools, when you look at the long-range facilities plan, they don't have what the state would consider a generic building. Like, we don't have a library, we don't, a cafeteria, and a gym, like, three different rooms, it's one room. And without any air conditioning in any of our buildings, right? Some are bigger than others. You know, you look at the high schools, you know, you look at the art wing, and, and South hasn't been, you know, has been out there for, what, a decade? You know, North is cafeteria, I think, is smaller than Thorne's. That's, you know, it's, there's a lot of things out there that we kind of live with, and the question is, what can we do over time, like, a long-term plan, to start getting things moving? So we have facilities that look like that they need to be to, to execute the educational programs that we want. So we'll have to see what the demographer comes up with. The district has a lot of information to share, we shared a lot of that information with the public, so I don't want to overtalk it, but I think, you know, all the goals are related, one way or the other. You know, we need the buildings, we need the resources allocated across, and we have to, you know, look, you know, the state's not going to be giving us more money, right? So we have to kind of figure that out.
So John, you're talking about bringing the demographer, and he's going to give you ideas, but at the bottom, the bottom line, it's what some of us have been saying all along, if you want to do some of these improvements to these buildings, you're going to have to ask the public for money to do it.
Maybe, you're not wrong, right? But the end of the day is, if, if we have to go out and ask, we have, at the end of the day, we, we all know, I think, what our capital budget is, right? It's, what, a million dollars or less? You know, our, you know, our long-range facilities plan aren't necessarily everything that needs to be done now, but that's $150 million, and that's not even really increasing any space. We have security things, folks want, you know, the double doors in elementary schools like we have in the high school and middle schools. So you're right. So the question is, when you go to the public, you know, you have this invest, hold or divest. You know, people aren't going to want to spend their tax money on silly ideas, so you have to figure out, if we're going to invest, what are we investing in? And how long that, how long it is? So we have to kind of figure that out. You know, that would be part of, I think, this Committee to figure out, if, if you're referring to referendum of some sort, something in the, in the next five years, whether we would do that, and what we need to get that done. Does that answer your question, Joan?
Well, kind of, but I mean, I'm still going back to the strategic planning meetings, and the community was pretty strong on some of the things they didn't want to see happen. And if some of those things, the things this demographer or the Committee is going to say they want to do, we're never going to gain public trust.
Well, Joan, but I think you're, I think you're jumping ahead to conclusions without letting the, the, and I think you're, honestly, I think you're, you're planting seeds where there's no need to do that. We are at the beginning stages of a long-term project, and the, by working with not just a demographer, like the Board did the last time they went through this, somebody who's just going to throw some dots together and put them up on a screen, we're working with people who can help us plan. And I, as a taxpayer, would not want to give my money to any organization that doesn't have a solid, sustainable plan in hand, and be able to back that up, not just with data, but also with the expertise that goes along with it. So as John said, you know, we have elementary school buildings, you know, that lack in basic facilities. We don't have, you know, cafeterias with kitchens, much less standalone cafeterias. We can't serve hot food, you know, fresh hot food in our elementary schools. I personally think that's deficient, right? But how do we achieve a small change, such as getting cafeterias into our elementary schools? And do we do that as a one-off, or do we do that, you know, as part of a larger plan? That's what the demographer and, and the planning firm is here to help us get to. I don't think, you know, as somebody who is, you know, a, a, a part of those strategic planning meetings, I wouldn't then turn around and come back to the Committee and say, you know what, the answer to all of our problems is grade banding, right? A, that's suicide. B, it's really not an answer, it's an idea. And the idea is that you kick those ideas around, and you take the community feedback, and you say, you know what, that idea may not hold a lot of water, but what may hold water is this other thing. And so you talk about the other thing. So we're not there yet. Right now, we haven't even put pen to paper with our planning company, we have not engaged them to start their work, we are at the beginning steps. So, you know, I, I would stay away from what this might be, or what that might be, because honestly, all that does is fire up Facebook. And that's not what we're here to do.
I'm not planting seeds, I'm talking reality and perception that's out there, so, you know, don't go.
Right, and so, the perception.
We have to, we have to gain the trust of the community back, we've lost some, we need to gain it back.
No, Joan, I don't, I don't agree with that, I don't, I don't agree with that at all. I don't know why you keep saying that, because you, you keep saying things like, as if, you know, it, it, when this thing comes through and you have answers, right, or people have answers, then, then give the answers. The bottom line is, you know, we are not, we don't, don't have the same funds we used to have, we don't live in the same world, you know? And if there's going to be change, there'll be change. I mean, when some of these buildings were built, like horse and buggies, are, sorry, I'm glitching. Horse and buggies, are you still driving around in a horse and buggy? I mean, there's communities and there's districts all across the state making decisions. If we don't consider these options, it's just not about the kids that are in school now, it's going to be the kids' school five years, 10 years, 15 years from now. There's going to have to be change at some point, and whatever that is, it's going to have to be decided on. If it's not in this planning, it's going to be another planning cycle. But in terms of losing confidence, I think it's when Board members like yourself say stuff like that, and that's just, I don't think that's a fair comment, and I'm tired of hearing it, just tired of hearing it.
I'm sorry, you're tired.
You're really not sorry, you've been, you do that the whole time, like, if you have suggestions, then, then, then make suggestions as we go through the planning, something that's actually operational, right?
John, I'm sorry you're tired of hearing it?
No, I'm tired of hearing you say it.
John.
I'm tired of hearing you say it, because you say it in Board meetings all the time. It's not true, it's not true across the board.
John, I'm sorry you're tired of hearing it. But some of these, some of these things that come out, come out from reports and, and people that shouldn't be starting rumors, but don't go blaming me for planting seeds. I know that things have changed, and I know that things have to get better, but I also know that in order to get people to understand the change, you have to keep trust.
Of course we have to keep trust, and the way that we're actually going to build trust, quite frankly, is to do what we're doing now. So what we have to do, which is what we are planning to do with this demographer, and also the support services that they're going to provide us, which is why a lot of us on the Strategic Planning Committee were attracted to them, and not the other group that was literally just going to put dots on a piece of paper, is that they are going to be able to take us through various plans. Honestly, I sat through all the strategic forums, I heard one directive from the public, which was, we want to see plans, not a plan, multiple plans. And so we can actually get there with the demographer to say, if you're thinking about this particular set of schools, and what this could mean, this is what you could do. If you're looking at something completely district-wide, this would be Plan B. If you're looking at not doing anything, well, that's Plan C. If you're looking at doing small incremental steps, which is not really going to make a difference, that's Plan D. That's where we're heading. And for us to say now, or, or any of the Board members to intimate that we have actual ideas in mind, is completely disingenuous at this point, because everything is on the table, that was specifically made clear by the public, and also their answers to the survey, is that there are specific issues that have existed since I was a child in this town, that finally need to be addressed. And so now we're going to put the information in front of them, so that way we can actually get somewhere.
I never said anybody had a plan, I asked what the discussions were, to come up with some of the, that's all I asked. I wasn't there, I wasn't able to be there, so I was curious what the discussion was.
I think it's great that Mrs. Wright brought that up. They did say, this company did say that they could present up to four different plans, and they have this wonderful program where anyone in the public can type in their address and look at the plan, and see how it would affect them personally, so that they know how it will affect them personally. And that was one of the, one of the great qualities of this company. So I'm very positive, and I'm excited about this. And I think that what Mr. Little was trying to say is that we work best when we work together as a team, right? When all the Board members are on board with an objective, and that's to do the very best we can for this district. And when we work as a team, that's when we're at our best, supporting the Administration, rather than... rather than trying to point fingers at each other or being dysfunctional and breaking into different groups against each other. That's not what we want to do. What we want to do is we want to work together to do the very best we can for this district. And I think, I think that's what Mr. Little was trying to say.
Different way of saying it.
Right. Um, okay. So does anyone else have anything else to say about goal number six?
Okay, we're just going to go on to the next steps. Hold on for a second. All right. So there are six goals with objectives that the committees have drafted based on community input and aligned with the mission, vision, belief statements, right? Next, we ask the community to provide their input on the goals and objectives over the next two weeks. We want you to send your comments to the strategicplanning@middletown.org email address. The board strategic planning committee and administration will review all the comments and thoughts and we're going to revise the goals and objectives as appropriate. The revised draft strategic goals and strategic plan goals and objectives will then be presented for the board, for their vote on June 24th at the board meeting. The strategic planning committee and administration will then create action steps for each objective, which will also be shared with the full board and the community when they are completed. Anybody want to say anything about, did I miss anything in our next steps? Good? All right. So lastly, and, and this is just as important, and Mrs. Rogers actually mentioned it in the beginning and, and a couple of times in the middle, that we would like to thank our community. Thank you for the involvement. You, the parents, the teachers, the students, the board members, the administrators, the community members at large. You're the real designer of these goals and objectives. Together, we created a challenging shared vision for our students in these challenging times right now and a tool for decision-making and resource allocation as we navigate our district's future. We ask for your continued support as we work to complete the planning and implement the plan and finally realize our goals. And we thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. I think it's so important to mention these particular times, because as Mr. Little did say, you know, we're, we're not going to be getting money from the state. We are asking the federal government to step up and provide some relief tonight with a resolution that we have on the table. But at the end of the day, we're in a worse financial position now than we were when we made that heart-wrenching, difficult decision to close Port Monmouth Elementary. And I think it's important to understand that at these times, we really do need to stick together. So I think that was very well said, Mrs. Walker. At this time, I'd like to open the mic to public comments. This is on agenda items only. Please stick to your three minutes. Know that this is a board meeting. We're here to do the business of the board and we welcome your comments to be put on the record. If you'd like to engage in a back and forth, please feel free to email us. I'm RogersPA@MiddletownK12.org. We can have a back and forth there, but for tonight, it's just a place for you to get your comment on the record. So we most likely will not respond this evening and that doesn't mean that we're not interested in what you have to say. We're always interested in what the public has to say.
Okay, we have, uh, the first hand raised is from Suman underscore laptop. So maybe they can notify us of their name when they are unmuted.
Thank you. And thanks for this deliberation. My concern was not exactly on the agenda item, so I might be, if you feel like not answering, not answer, but it's a very important concern.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name for the record, please?
Suman Banerjee. I, my daughter is in high school. She's taking her AP exams and they're extremely frustrated about the entire process. This is about our future. I understand what you are talking about is future of the next generation. But these students are going through their future. It's a matter of, you know, if they don't do well, if the callousness of the college board destroys somebody's career, it cannot be repaired. So the board has to take care and look at these issues right now. I mean, they are so frustrated. I'm speaking for my daughter, but I know lots of our friends. They're so frustrated about the way these things are going right now with the college board. With, with, so we should start seriously negotiating as an institution, which is you are, with these, with these other institutions. For them, probably it's one person, one student of the millions they have. But for us, this is our daughter, this is our, you know, my daughter's friends. I am myself an educationist and I'm a professor. I understand the concerns, you know, their concerns as well. But it's, it's not a joke. This is about life of a future of a kid. You know, if, if they get disappointed, dejected, nothing, a good building, a beautiful playing field, cannot recover this in the future. It is, it is something that we need to act now and we act, need to act in a very decisive manner that these will not disappoint the students, college board, or everybody has, you know, they have to increase their manpower to answer this, this concerns right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Lisa Baker.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. This is Lisa Baker from New Monmouth. I was again, hoping to hear about something about the 180 days being changed at some point. Uh, another thing I would like to say, just from the current conversation, is that I do believe Joan is correct. I don't think she's creating seeds. I think they're already there. I think if we want to stick our heads in the sand and pretend they're not there, I think there is a distrust. And I think I even heard it before the consolidation and I heard it when we were at the strategic planning meetings. So I think there does need to be some kind of open communication. I know you are all trying to be very open, but I do believe that she's not creating some sort of rumor. I do believe from my experience and people I've spoken to, not just from Port Monmouth or New Monmouth community, that that's not something that is necessarily untrue. The other thing I did want to say is, I know Dr. George went to go speak at Washington last year and it's kind of been on my mind. And I just wanted to know if there was some kind of like program, and I know you guys aren't going to answer this, and I will reach out to Robin because it wasn't something I got to discuss with her. But is there like a program or something like a communication with the parents to be involved at the state level? Something that we can do or speak out or more so than just emails to make more noise? Because just from the current situation, the pandemic, I'm disheartened at times when I read articles and I'm worried that more money is going to be taken away from the school system, which would just be devastating. And I just want to know how we, the parents, can make more of an impact at the state level instead of just emails that will get generic emails back. I don't know, I just, and I don't know, I'm just asking if that's something that's available or, you know, to know when Dr. George is going, maybe we write letters or something, you know, or whoever will be in, in that position later. But that's just something that keeps running through my head as I'm reading articles and very scared that, you know, our children are going to kind of take the, the hit from this pandemic academically. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Um, can I just say something real quick? One thing that I would suggest is to write to your own local legislatures. So legislators, so write to Declan O'Scanlon, Serena Damaso. Write to your assembly people and to your state senator. Make phone calls, writes and postcards, in addition to calling and emailing the governor's office. That, that would be my suggestion is to stay local with it and reach out to the people who represent all of us.
Ms. Stowe, that's a great idea. And as the board knows, based on my Friday memo last, uh, last week, we, Mrs. Wright, Mr. Jaimo, myself, and Mrs. Rogers, we've reached out to, I wrote directly to our local and state-level legislators, asking for us to, to meet with them at the request of the board strategic plan, I mean, at the request of, of the board legislative committee to, to have discussions and open dialogue and to support us in doing that. If our, if our citizens of Middletown write to local legislators as well, as well, it will support our efforts. So I agree, thank you. Good point.
I just wanted to add to that because back in the years, we had a committee with parents and we went to Trenton and we rallied for certain rules that, laws that they were trying to pass. Middletown is a huge community with a lot of resources. And I said this when we put the legislative committee together. I really do think we need to get together with our parents, because writing letters, they're right. Alls we're getting back is generic answers. Things happen in numbers. I talked about trying to bring somebody in to help the parents and the board members learn how to lobby in a correct and, and effective way. I really think it's time for Middletown to start doing that. And maybe our legislative committee can put something together, because we have so many resources in Middletown and so many people that want to do things. Look at our student government. They've been writing to the governor every day about graduations, so have our parents. But yet when people ask, what can we do? We say, well, there's really not much you can do, but there is a lot that we can do. We just need to organize.
So this evening, we are passing a resolution and we are calling on our congressmen, Congressman Smith and Congressman Palone in Districts Four and Six to support the corresponding legislation to the Smart Fund, the Smart Fund bill, which is now in the Senate right now. Senators Cassidy and Senator Menendez have co-sponsored that. We are asking Congressman Smith and Congressman Palone to sponsor a corresponding bill. This is a bill asking the federal government to step up with $500 billion to be split among 21 states, our state included. And if the parents want to climb on board with that, I'm hoping tonight we pass this resolution. I'm hoping we get all of the districts in District Four and District Six to climb on board with us, all of the Board of Education, but it would be wonderful if the parents can jump on board with that. So I think that's a great idea to get people involved.
Just, just Rogers, finally, just to kind of manage expectations, just, I'll just say slightly caution board members. The roles and responsibilities of board members are governed by Title 18, the Code of Ethics, ETA 12-24.1. While the board can use its, its platform, as you are this evening, to pass a resolution to encourage support for federal and state legislation, that may not necessarily, you know, extend to, you know, organizing rallies and protests, et cetera, utilizing district resources and/or personnel that may not be, you know, within the purview of board members' sworn role while you're sitting on the dais. As a private citizen, you're, you're more than welcome to engage with community groups, PTA groups, et cetera, do so. But I just wanted to again, manage the expectations of board members and/or those who may be listening with respect to some of the restrictions that board members may have in their official capacity representing Middletown Township Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lester. Do we have another public comment?
Yes, next is Jason Nadal.
Apologies. For the record, my name is Jason Nadal and I'm commenting as a parent of a Port Monmouth kindergartner and a senior director of technical architecture for my firm. First, I want to commend tech staff at both the district and our local level at already having foresight to have an adaptable platform to let us transition somewhat uncomfortable, but functional as we have, and that is certainly no small feat. I'm questioning why cutting other specials, specifically the arts, to provide a computer special is necessary, considering that so many other core classes integrate computer science basics. Again, as defined by the 2020 standards, Ms. Morales gave some background on earlier tonight in with her classes, especially gamified with platforms such as Codable, which introduces some of the primary levels with basic HTML, JavaScript and functional programming. The majority of those 2020 mandates and all of the K to two mandates were possible to integrate with existing classes with minimal impact to scheduling. Thanks to the foresight and planning of the primary teachers that you guys already had, easily half of those requirements could be seen as completed already just through the K, the kindergarten class alone this year. As part of the planning for the upcoming curriculum, teachers should be able to integrate the requirements of the mandate with their existing lesson plans. And I, and I hope that's considered going forward and I'll yield the rest of the remaining time.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Lisa Leek.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi. Since you have been discussing the new goals and objectives, I believe my question is essential in relation to those. Throughout the year, I have spoken to you repeatedly about large class sizes that exist at Bayview. I have three children, one in kindergarten, one in fourth and one in fifth. My kindergartner spent her first half of the year in a class of 26 five-year-olds with full extra support in the room. Now, because of COVID, she has spent the second half of the year on remote instruction, which is obviously far inferior to the classroom and her teachers. I was just informed at a recent PTA meeting that upon returning to Bayview in September, hopefully, her grade will still only have two sections maxed out in both. With how far behind they will end up at Bay, how can allow them to continue to be in an overcrowded environment? In the next few years, I guarantee that the Middletown's testing scores will be abysmal based on this current situation. It is impossible to reach all of the objectives and goals that you mentioned during the strategic planning time in a room of 26 first graders. I think you would agree that that's extremely difficult. Our younger children need the foundational skills to be successful and this cannot occur in the overcrowded classrooms that we continue to have. My kindergartner can't wait years for the demographer and the redrawing of the lines. By that time, it will be too late. Being a teacher in a district struggling with us too, I understand greatly our budgetary issues, but my daughter deserves the class sizes necessary to meet her needs. Most of the goals and objectives you mentioned during the strategic planning presentation will not be met with the current class sizes that will continue to exist at Bayview. As a board, some members need to stop talking about earning trust by manipulating the truth and just give our children what they need. It's exhausting to hear people speak as the voice of the people when we're telling you our needs and they're not being met. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say something quickly about class sizes? We're, so class sizes are very fluid and I know that it's something that the administration, the administrative team works on all through the summer up until August as people register, people move. So it's something that, you know, isn't a constant. So hopefully, Mrs. Peek, if you can maybe add a little bit of, of a little bit of clarity to it, how the process works.
I'm a little unsure as to why any definitives may have been stated. This is very, as you said, preliminary time right now. We're looking at, at current projections as well as students who are enrolling and disenrolling from the district. And as we stated during the consolidation meetings and process, we're giving priority to the Title I schools as well as all of the district's K grade four to five schools to lowering class sizes. So as we get through the next couple of months and we have more definitive enrollment numbers as well as a more finalized picture of what our budget is and our ability to utilize our staffing budget, you know, we're going to work towards meeting those intended goals.
Thanks, Kim. I think it's important to understand too, that the strategic planning committee is looking at the goal of September 2021 to make big changes that will help with class size. I think it's important to keep reiterating that. Okay, Chris, who's next?
Next is Stacy Jones.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Stacy Jones. I have been involved in all of the strategic planning meetings leading up to this to be an involved member of the public. I just had a few comments and questions in follow-up to. and questions in follow-up to what you've presented tonight. You talked about the demographic firm that you're hiring and that they'll have options to view based on where you reside, whatever the proposals are that they have, how they would impact you directly, which is great. But you mentioned, and I think it might have been Mr. DiFranco mentioned, that they were presenting four options, that they were, that maybe it was Mrs. Rogers, that they were able to present four options, up to four options to the public. My question is, there was a lot of public input regarding certain options that were not of interest to the community for the board to consider. So with the demographic firm that you're working with, how are the things that came out of strategic planning from the public that were communicated to the board and to the administration and heard to some capacity being reflected in your communications with this firm so that they're aware of things? Banning was mentioned today, but there were others that were discussed that are not of interest to the public, things that might be a hard no to try to come back and sell so that we're not expending budget money on hiring a firm. And then we come out of this process and you're presenting us with four options that basically fly in the face of everything that the community has expressed they might not have interest in. And how much, on top of that then, how much public input will be involved in development of those four plans, or is it just done strictly by the firm? And if it's done strictly by the firm, what if none of the four options they come up with would be acceptable to the public or received well by the public and acceptable as something we wanted to move forward with? Then what is your next step as a board? How much input and save do we have? And that's what I'm unclear on, and I would like to understand better, having spent the time away from my family to attend all of these meetings and be involved and express my opinion over time.
So yeah, we will be briefing this company if we do hire them, if it is this company. We will be briefing them with all of the knowledge that we have gained through the strategic planning process. So they will be privy to all that knowledge. And please don't hold me to the four. That was just an example that they gave. You know, I think they had worked in Princeton and they presented four plans there. But certainly, this entire process has been driven by the public and all of the information that we've gotten from the public. So we would not fly in the face of that because that wouldn't behoove us. And we have kids in the school district as well. I have a kindergartner, a fifth grader, you know, the majority of the board members have kids in the district. So we want what's best for the majority of the district as well.
Okay. Next is Jessie Sikler.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jessie Sikler. I am a Port Monmouth parent. I do want to discuss something that was on topic tonight, and that is the demographic study. First, I want to say I'm happy that at last we'll have someone that will give us something legitimate. And the second point I'd like to make is where the lack of trust is, and the term transparency is thrown around like candy, because I heard several board members tonight reference the last demographic study as a company that just threw some dots up on a piece of paper. So that last demographic study was what was used as a main point in the closing of Port Monmouth School. So while I'm happy that you're going to secure a reputable firm, I've lost my trust because you've made serious choices based on a firm that by your words threw some dots up on a piece of paper. Thank you.
Okay, next. Next is Vera Piaszeki.
Hi. Just a reference to the Personnel Report, Item 4. Before you vote or as you go through, would somebody be able to talk about what this H A R slash N T S Elementary Assistant Principal is? And also, maybe also talk about splitting the Guidance Counselors, one for North, one for South, and what head count that's going to add, if any? Also, as we go through the process, I mean, there's been a lot of talk and maybe even on social media about everybody expecting some huge savings from the fact that the district has been closed. And I think it would be very useful if somebody would talk about budget savings as well as maybe additional costs that you're incurring, particularly, you know, big items like busing. You know, what is happening with that since we haven't been using any buses? And also, there's been a lot of news coming out of the state about no changes to the current aid, but also no money being given for the expansion of preschool or extraordinary special ed aid. And I was curious what that meant to our district. And my last question as it relates to trust, and I'm an old timer here, so forgive me, I'm dated. But when I started with the district, there were a lot of ad hoc and community committees that were very well respected and actually were used to sell and get the community to vote for the last referendum. And I think we, as a community, and those ad hoc committees were very successful in helping the district do that. And when I look at the community involvement now from a district perspective, I'm not sure I see a lot. I mean, PIC is more of an informational group versus feeding information back and forth. It seems to be more one-way. And I'm encouraged to see, I haven't read it in depth, but some of the goals where you talk about parental PTA input, and I'd like to look through that in more depth. But I think the trust can maybe be brought back into hold if we could somehow ensure that there's more community input upfront and in a valuable way. Thank you.
There was a lot there. I would suggest, Ms. Piaszeki, that you please put your comments in an email and we will answer them. And I think tonight we should speak directly to the ones that are on the agenda. So I think the first one on the agenda was the one as it relates to elementary position. So I'll let you speak to that. And then Mrs. Walker, maybe you can speak about the split of the guidance position.
So the goal is to create further articulation and support and interconnectedness between the Curriculum Department and the Student Services Department. Dr. Tiedemann and I have been working, and Mrs. Walker have been working very closely together to create that type of opportunity, especially amongst our administrative team, to support the important goals that are included in the new strategic plan in terms of inclusion, increasing inclusive opportunities, and personalized learning and equity for all students. But to that regard, we are, the net, Mrs. Piaszeki, that she's referring to, what does that mean to the overall number of administrators, some of these transfers, is that we are still down one position in our overall administrative team again this year with the consolidation of the two elementary schools. So we will have one less administrator district-wide to support our schools and our students and our staff members. However, we are going to be reorganizing. Mrs. Marrow is on the transfer. I think that's the one you're referring to, the Assistant Principal. She's currently serving the role of Supervisor of Elementary in the Curriculum Department. She's going to be working as an Assistant Principal specifically, housed at two of our larger elementary schools, Harmony, where we have six pre-K classes of the 12 in just that one building, as well as the large school of Nut Swamp, where we have a significant number of special needs students just because of its sheer size. So her role will be in working with the pre-K classes district-wide, not just at Harmony, but again, the majority of them are at Harmony Elementary School. So working with those pre-K teachers, the kindergarten teachers, ensuring that there's good articulation between those two grade levels and supporting those programs. She has done a lot to support our early childhood elementary teachers and our curriculum. She will continue to work with the reading development teachers and the math specialists, as well as the child study teams and the INRS teams, which is a furtherance, an expansion of her role, to support that collaboration that needs to take place between the tiered leveled intervention that students, some students receive in a gen ed environment, and connecting that to what happens when and if at times students then are eligible for special education services and receive an IEP, and working with the child study teams and the teachers to make sure that it's appropriate programs the students are receiving, especially in the least restrictive environment, again, furthering our goal of inclusion. So she'll be working also with Ms. Shrek. I just saw her come on. Ms. Shrek is excited to have some partners in to support our curriculum and our special education goals because we see them as one in the same. I don't know, Mrs. Walker, if you want, I can just kind of lead into. I thought you gave me the, go ahead. Dr. Tiedemann has been a very strong advocate of making sure that we have someone at High School South in the administrative team, so has Mr. Kirkpatrick, who can support the significant number of special ed programs that are housed at High School South. Moving Dr. Trudell to the role of AP of Guidance at High School South, FREET allows for us to utilize the position that Mrs. Timmons has been currently serving in. Many of you may be aware, she resigned, I guess it was last month, and we're going to be filling that with an Assistant Principal. We just put out the posting actually today. And if you see the posting on our website, there is strong emphasis in looking for someone with qualifications with a special education background, who has served in some capacity in a role of special education, as well as someone with familiarity of special class programs such as autism and our SLE program, our Structured Learning Experience Program. So again, our furtherance to create greater collaboration and unity between the Curriculum Department and our administrative team, building-based teams, as well as the Student Services Department. And we will have one more posting coming out. Sorry, not to continue that, but we will also be utilizing another current contract in the budget to create an additional. The posting will be going out tomorrow. The board has been supportive of this, again, to support the elementary schools and the special ed programs in those elementary schools. And also, the middle schools will be looking for an Assistant Principal to serve in the role at New Monmouth and Lynn Croft especially, but also supporting our K-8 autism programs in all of our elementary and middle schools where they are housed, as well as, again, working with Ms. Shrek and Dr. Tiedemann in the Curriculum Office, ensuring that we're supporting least restrictive environments and inclusive opportunities.
Thank you. Anything else we didn't get to, please email us and we'll get to those answers so everyone has an opportunity to speak.
Okay, next. There is no last name. Next up is Maggie. Maybe they can provide us with their last name.
Hello. This is McGally Milton. Maggie is my Starbucks alias name. I am the parent of a high school senior at South as well as the co-chair of MTF ODL. And I just wanted to thank everyone for just collaborating, the administration and the board on the win period. That's really fantastic news. And I can say that on behalf of the special ed community, we feel heard from the strategic planning process. We're just excited to learn more about it. I know we have a meeting coming up with the administrators at MTF ODL. We're more excited to learn about this and how it's going to be used to help serve that population. So just thank you so much for that. I think, you know, as everyone has said, it will really improve all the opportunities for inclusion. And always hard for kids to be missing important curriculum. And so I really thank you for having done that. And it's also very exciting to see in goals, I believe it was four and five, all the parental involvement and engagement that has been put into those goals. So really, I forgot, maybe Dr. George said this at one of our meetings, how things will not be the same after COVID. And I think the partnerships that are being developed at this time are really important. And I can definitely see how some of, we may be going through different periods and we need to keep up that partnership. So it's really nice to see that in the goals. And just lastly, I just want to say that I'm also excited to see how computer science is coming in at a younger time in students' lives. My daughter is very keen on that. Will be studying that in college. And as an alumna of Harvard, they have now instituted computer science as a requirement for all students because it's now being seen as a foundational science. So it's very exciting to see how kids are going to be exposed to that earlier on. And I understand the sacrifices that need to be made, and I know that no decisions were easy, but it's really great to see how that is being integrated into curriculum and not at too much of an expense of the arts. So that's, those are my comments. But again, thank you very much. It's a really great, great plan and just really some exciting things happening. That's all.
Thank you, McGally, and thank you for everything that you and Heather are doing with MFODL.
I'm seeing no more hands raised, and there are no emails that have been sent to the board meeting at MiddletownK12.org account.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So at this time, I'd like to move on to this voting portion of the meeting. I need a motion to approve. Before I do this, though, members of the public, if you could please look at your agendas at MiddletownK12.org, print them out if necessary. I'm not going to be able to read every single thing that we're voting on this evening because it is such a long agenda. So please, I'm just going to be, you know, be saying 9A, 1 through 12, or whatever. So please follow along in your agenda if you can. So I need a motion to approve 9A, and that's 1 through 21. So moved.
So seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve 9B, 1 through 6.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve C, 1 through 3.
So moved. So moved. Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve Letters D through, sorry, bear with me here, through U. So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I apologize, but I need a motion to approve 9V, please. So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve number 10, Letters A through G.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve Numbers 11 through 15. So moved.
Seconded.
And I just want to make sure if you're including Mrs. Rogers, Number 15, you're also including the addendum, which is your SMART Act legislation.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, we do want to read that. Okay. Okay, so let's see how I can do this, I'm sorry. Cool, we did, so we did up to 14, yeah?
Well, I thought you said 11 through 15, but we can do 11.
Okay, so you know what I'm going to do? I'm sorry, guys, I need a motion to approve numbers 11 through 14.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I am abstaining.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was there an opposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Which number?
Uh, number, um, number 14, because we were at the meeting last time, we just couldn't speak.
So. But I don't think it's an opposed, I'm just abstaining from it because I can't vote on it.
Okay.
At the last meeting, for the 15, May 13, for the special vote rehire meeting.
Right.
Would it?
Okay. Um, so for number 15, I just want to read the resolution out loud, if I can find it. This is our resolution that I was referring to before. This is number 15A, the approval of the resolution for Middletown Township Board of Education to support the SMART Act and to encourage congressional support from Chris Smith in District 4 and Frank Malone in District 6. Whereas Congress has passed grants such as the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, known as the CARES Act, as part of the federal government stimulus package aimed at keeping Americans working and business afloat during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the CARES Act provided for payments to state, local, and tribal governments navigating the impact of the COVID-19 outbreak in the amount of $150 billion. And whereas fighting the COVID-19 pandemic has taken a toll on cities, towns, and states struggling to support their local health departments, pay teachers, and first responders, fix the roads, and maintain the parks. And whereas on May 18, 2020, Senator Bob Menendez and Bill Cassidy formally introduced the State and Municipal Assistance for Recovery and Transition Act, that's the SMART Act, to deliver an additional $500 billion in federal resources to state and communities responding to COVID-19. And whereas the SMART Act will provide emergency funding to every state, county, and community in the country while prioritizing assistance to the areas with the greatest need in order to avoid mass layoffs and steep tax hikes. And whereas counties and municipalities will each get a share of 1/6 of their state's respective allocation of the $500 billion set aside. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Middletown Board of Education seeks to support and endorse the legislative effort to pass the SMART Act, and be it further resolved that the board encourages Congressman Chris Smith in District 4 and Frank Malone in District 6 to make a good, safe effort to support the SMART Act within the House of Representatives so that this bill may become a law. So I need a motion to approve that resolution.
So I'm just being clear, we're just voting on 15A, correct?
Just 15A, please, Amy, yes.
All right, so motion was Robin and Deborah's second.
Discussion.
Pam, I, Pam, quick question. Assuming this motion carries, how is this delivered to the congressman?
I believe in a letter that Chris Rotola would write up, similar to the letter that we wrote to the legislators earlier in the year. Lester, do you want to jump in?
There was a little bit of a breakup when Nick asked his question. Can you just repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Lester, the question was, provided this motion carries, how is this resolution being communicated to the respective congressman?
Oh, I would just suggest that Ms. Dougherty, as Board Secretary, forward it to their offices on behalf of the board to, you know, convey the passage of this resolution.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, discussion, that was discussion, anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So this next one is, I need a motion to approve 15 B and C. 15B and C, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed on number C1.
C1.
C, C1.
C1, got it. Abstentions? Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Mrs. Rogers, I just wanted to, there is an item four under letter C for the superintendent's update, so Dr. George.
Yes, well, we just wanted to give a brief report out on the district goals. Seeing late hour, if you would rather us post that and then if we could be in questions, answer for next week, or do you want us to give an abbreviated, Mrs. Walker, Ms. Pecus, myself, and abbreviate it, just report on it, and then we can post the information as well.
I'm okay just to post, anybody else?
I'm okay with posting.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, that's fine, Dr. George, thank you. So, okay, so we've got the motion on the table, right, for C1 through 4? And do we have a second for C1 through 4?
So moved.
We, we already voted on 15C, B and C.
Ah, in its entirety, I'm sorry, okay, so we've already approved it, yeah? Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I need a motion to approve 16, let's see, A. Can I do A through? A through F, can I do that? Does that work?
You said F, right, Mrs. Rogers.
Can I do that all together?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion to approve 16A through F, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There's nothing to vote on for student activities, negotiations, and personnel. We're good, we did the, we did the addendum. Okay, so moving on to old business.
What about the personnel?
You did your personnel. You have to vote on the personnel.
I'm sorry, voting on personnel, right, including the addendum, right? I need a motion, thank you, Leonora, I need a motion to approve letter I.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion.
I like to discuss a few things here. So letter I, you're doing all of letter I at one time, right? From one through 10. Okay, I'm going to be voting on a few of these contracts. And the reason why I'm going to be voting no on them, I want, because I wasn't at closed session. I'm voting no on these contracts because in these times, what we're at right now, it has no reflection on the people that the contracts are written for, because I have the most respect for you guys. But I also know that we have a 20%.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Ms. Rogers, quick question for a point of order. Are we in the roll call now or discussion? I'm sorry.
Discussion.
We're discussing, okay, thank you, I'll, I'll forego my comment. I'll just, would just caution board members with respect to the personnel exception. So Ms. Caminiti, just please be guided accordingly with respect to the comments if they relate to.
I'm being very respectful.
They, they should be discussed in closing session, thank you.
Okay, I'm being very respectful. I couldn't be at closed session because when it was held. I just want to say that we have a 20% unemployment rate. We have people that have taken cuts, as far as, are people that we know all around that had to take pay cuts just to stay in their jobs, people that have been furloughed and stuff. And in good conscience, knowing where we are in our community, what's going on with the dollars figures and stuff, I will not be voting for these contracts. And it has nothing to do with the people behind them, it just has to do with the contracts in general. I just want you to know that. Thank you.
And I have a comment on, I'm going to start with number four. I'm glad to see that we are putting person back in each high school. When we took it away last year, I had a lot to say about it. I think it's a disservice to the kids, so I'm glad it's coming back. But I have to vote no on number four because I really don't feel we should be using the title of assistant principal. And number five, A, B, and C, I brought this up last year and I'm going to bring it up again. I don't know why we have to reference Monmouth University and cap their funding for the doctoral program. And number six, I think that all of our non-bargaining people deserve a fair and equal raise. I'm voting no because my personal opinion is I don't agree with how it was done.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I am opposed on five, A, B, C, and number six.
I am opposed on number four, assistant principal, number five, A, B, and C, and number six.
Ms. Rogers, I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty, could you please just do a roll call for these personnel matters?
Yes.
Thank you.
So for all the personnel items, we will do a roll call for items one through 10, including the items on the addendum. Mrs. Caminiti.
Okay, I will be yes for everything, but no for item five, A, B, C, and item number six.
Okay, so noted. Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin? Mr. Jaimo?
Yes.
Mr. Little? I'm so, oh, okay. Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
No on number four, the guidance count, the assistant principal of elementary. No on number five, A, B, C, and no on number six.
Yes on the other items?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, Mrs. Caminiti, we can hear you. Moving on to old business. Got to be careful what you say. All right, old business.
I don't know if this comes under old business or new business, Pam. Last week, I guess it's old business, because last week, when I couldn't get into the meeting, we took a vote on starting our meetings earlier. Because we have no place, we're all here, we're all around. But I hate to tell you, Pam, I do work, my job is still active, and I'm still driving around the state of New Jersey. I cannot make a closed session at 6 o'clock, it is physically impossible for me. I wrote to you, I asked you about that, but I didn't get a response, so that's why I'm bringing it up now. I don't think it was right to change the meeting time from 7 o'clock to 6 o'clock. I would like to see you go back to seven.
The problem is, Mrs. Caminiti, that you're in the minority with that opinion, and you know how it works. The majority.
No, Pam, I do know how it works, but like, really? Really? You just got to cut board members out now, even that too? So we can't make closed session? I mean, why don't we have them in the middle of the day? Why don't we have them at 1 o'clock in the afternoon? I mean, I don't, I don't get this.
But when I'm in the minority for something, for a vote, I understand how it feels like you're not being heard, but that's just how these things work. When you're in the minority on a decision, you just have to go with the majority.
Pam, you don't have to tell me this, I've been on the board for a long time, but it's two years.
So you understand.
Of not being, two years of not being heard, thank you, dear, thank you, you're ruling wonderful.
I just want to add to that, it's different when you're in the minority on a vote and the vote goes one way, but when you're an elected official and you agree to the times of the meetings and you've been attending them and you're cutting somebody out, that should be a majority of the, of the board's decision.
It was a majority of the board's decision, Mrs. Minuys.
I said it shouldn't be.
Oh, it shouldn't be?
So, so Ms. Rogers.
Are we just a minority then? How would we organize the decision to that move?
I think you should, I think you should.
I have a question.
The meetings at the time they were supposed to be.
So, Mrs. Rogers.
Didn't we post, wait a minute, wait a minute, Lester, Lester, one minute. Didn't we vote on this in the beginning of the year, our meeting, our times and our meetings? We put a schedule together, we put it out to the public, we put it out for everybody. That's my two cents.
I believe that you voted no to that, but we did, yes.
So, Mrs. Rogers, there is nothing procedurally, legally, or ethically wrong with a, a public body, such as the Board of Education, changing its meeting schedule so long as the meetings are advertised and are re-advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, which to my knowledge has occurred. And quite frankly, public entities, school boards, municipal councils, freeholder boards, the legislature, all have been revising meeting schedules and times due to the pandemic that we're in, the, the new normal of modified work schedules, working from home, et cetera. So this is nothing out of the ordinary for a Middletown school.
Okay, can we move on to new business? Does anyone have new business?
Mrs. Rogers, I've got some new business.
Okay.
So I, you know, we had a, we had a lot of what I would call really engaged meetings over the past couple of weeks with the various strategic plan and goal committees. I think it was probably the most energized I've been as a board member, being able to, to talk with the administrators, you know, and the building level personnel about, you know, their vision of the, the district over the next five years. It was, it was, it was really great. One thing, though, that came out of that discussion that stuck with me, that I want to bring up to the board and, and suggest that we take this to the policy committee, is that we have a policy, we have two policies. We have policy 5120, the assignment of pupils, and we have policy 8110, the attendance areas. And these are the two policies that directly relate to, you know, Middletown's favorite parlor game, which is redistricting discussion. And these are the two policies, 5120 and 8110, that define how we would go about assigning students to schools and how we would go about identifying attendance areas. However, these policies do not have associated regulations that require the district and the board to revisit and evaluate the sending zones on any sort of a periodic basis. And I think as part of communicating to the public that we want to move forward and take measured steps, I think it would be advantageous for us to create a regulation, and I'll leave it to the policy committee to where this goes, but to create a regulation that indicates that no less than every five years, the Board of Education and working with the administration will reevaluate the sending zones for the elementary, middle, and high schools and release revised, if necessary, redistricting plans. I just think that, you know, I, I want to be on a board that doesn't kick the can down the road. I think that I hear a lot of talk about people who have been on the board a long time, and the can has been kicked for a long time. And I think it's time to pick up the can and do something with it. So I propose to the board and, and I submit to you, Mrs. Rogers, that we engage the policy committee to come back to us in a month with a draft regulation to memorialize redistricting no less than every five years in this district.
I thought regulations had it come from the superintendent.
If I may, Mr. DeFranco, yes, Mrs. Minuys beat me to the punch. So procedurally, the board sets policy. The administration has the, the, the authority to. The administration has the, the, the authority to essentially create regulations to guide the administration on how to carry out that policy. Which is why some policies have regulations, others don't. Uh, I think the, the spirit and the intent of what you're saying can be reviewed with the committee. And could perhaps result in a revision of the policy, going through the appropriate process to revise a policy. I would also just keep in mind, I, I think I understand the intent, but it raises some minor concern about a, a current board binding a future board to certain action. So the language might need to be more advisory, so to speak, versus mandating, you know, future elected officials to do something.
I think, I think, and I'm, I'm okay with all of that, and I apologize for, for confusing my regulations and my policies. Where in my line of work, it's the, the regulation where we do, where we take the action, so I do apologize. But yeah, absolutely, so, so if that's the course of action, then I would revise my request. And ask the policy committee to look into the policy, to adding some language to, to spur us to take action on redistricting.
Absolutely, I think it's a good idea, Mr. Donlin, I don't know if you want to speak more to that, I'm on the policy committee, and I, I would like to take that up, of course, absolutely.
No, I, I agree with Nick, okay, we're, we're gonna have to take a look at the present policy, see if we can make modifications that fit within the rules and the law, and then vote on it.
And I would just like to say. I'd just like to say, Mr. DeFranco, that your, your comments are consistent with the administrative team's position. As you have heard us speaking at, at both facilities, and also finance meetings, so certainly that would be supported by administration as well.
Can we also take a look at the attendance policy? That the students brought up a few months ago, and now that the pandemic is here, and we really don't want our parents feeling that their kids need to come to school when they're sick. That something's going to be held against them, can we revisit that?
Uh, well, Mrs. Minuies, we, we've already stated that publicly that we will be doing that, we did have those conversations. Parent Information Committee, walkers spoken on it, but we did take action to lessen those restrictions during the health crisis. And as we've stated multiple times, that, 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 that is definitely something that needs to be revisited with record, so thank you, yes, we will take that up.
Great. Okay, any other new business?
Yes, back to Ms. Minuies' question. Dr. George, is that a local decision we would make on that policy or attendance? Or is that something we're going to be waiting for new guidelines from the state to go into effect in September?
Well, yeah, that's part of the follow-up on it, we will be taking, we will be looking very closely at the guideline. From the state moving forward. And we will give an update on that, but we have already stated that, that, that was our intention, it's part of our conversations at Superintendent's Roundtable. I know that Mrs. Walker has been working with the nurses and discussions on that. And we have nursing leadership representation in Middletown. Our, our head nurses are also working in coordination with the, with the State Department. As it relates to all things surrounding this medical crisis, and certainly attendance is a part of it, so we will be revisiting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to public comment, we do have a limit of 30 minutes, and a limit each speaker to three minutes. And this is on any item that you'd like to discuss, doesn't have to be on the agenda.
I'm not seeing any hands raised at the moment. But we do have one. Brendan Colonin. He may have, he may have logged out. Brendan is no longer with us.
Okay, well, certainly, any member of the public can feel free to email us with their thoughts if they didn't get to comment this evening. Thank you all for a wonderful meeting, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Good night, everybody.
Night.